It is seven o'clock right now. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is October 24th. I will do a roll call, starting with you, Ms. Mar on Zoom.
President, Ellen Mar.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for joining us while you're on vacation.
Ms. Plex here.
Paul Grady, President.
Jack Creighton here.
Gene Haley Dipold here. All right. Are there any public comments? Is there anything online? All right. We will proceed. Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone is invited to join.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay. So what we have right now, it's 7:02. One Day Liquor License, Friends of Holly Hill Farm, for a farm-to-table event on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Do we have anyone from Holly Hill Farm? I know Holly Hill has been doing a variety of these. Are there any questions from the board? Would any board member like to make a motion to
So moved.
Approve the application of Holly Hill Farm for November 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
I'd like to move, we approve the Holly Hill Farm application for November 4th, from 6:00. What's the time?
6:00 to 9:00.
6:00 to 9:00.
Second.
Okay.
Well, good.
All right. Why don't, Ms. Mar, because you are online, what is your vote?
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Okay. Everyone else, the remaining four members, please vote aye, if that's the way you feel.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All in favor.
All right, we're gonna mix it up a little bit for you, Ellen, to keep the record clean. Okay. The next is, and I see Mr. Lampke is here. Thank you, Mr. Lampke. We're a little bit ahead of schedule at 7:03. Before we move ahead of schedule, I just want to make sure that the applicant is here for the public hearing for the Cohasset Yacht Club for a new on-premises Section 12 All Alcohol Annual License.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here on behalf of the licensing, and I believe Eric Cruz. Yep, there he is.
I'm here.
Okay. All right.
What time was it advertised for?
7:10, it's 7:03 right now. You want us to wait seven minutes?
Advertised hearing, it is safer to observe the advertised time.
Okay.
Kill it on the basis of
All right, why don't we skip to appointments? Would, yes.
The other one is being continued, so I think you could probably call that one. The mine wine.
Okay. You don't want to press my luck on that one.
Is that okay? Can you call that one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let me call that one. This is the application. I think I need to read the notice of hearing and then seek a motion to continue it. So this relates to the Mine at Wine Company. So this is the public hearing notice for today. The Cohasset Select Board acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. At 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcock Commons Cohasset, Mass., to consider the application of Mine, excuse me, Wine Company LLC for a new off-site premises, Section 15 Wine and Malt Beverages Package Store. The proposed manager is Brian McLaughlin. The licensed premises are located at 12 Parking Way Suite 1A Cohasset, Mass. The shop will occupy approximately 195 square feet of space in the lower level of 12 Parking Way with a dedicated entrance exit into a common stairwell for the building. It will also have access to a ramp entry point for the lower level to help facilitate deliveries. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. The public can also attend via Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. Agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.org. And the meeting/hearing notices of calendar section located at the bottom of the front page of the website. Full application is available in the Select Board office. Mr. Lampke, I understand the applicant is seeking to continue until November 28th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Would the board like to, any board member like to make a motion to continue to November 28th?
I beg your motion to continue November 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the, okay. All those present, please vote aye, and then I'll get to you, Ms. Mar.
Aye.
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 Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Okay. All are in favor. All right, 7:06 p.m. Why don't we, if, if okay with the board, I would entertain a motion to move the appointments up for the Affordable Housing Trust and Cohasset Cultural Council.
I made that motion.
Would anyone second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor who are present, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Okay. So let's start with the Affordable Housing Trust. We do need a Select Board representative, as we talked about earlier for that. Would anyone like to volunteer for that position?
Oh, I said I would.
All right, we have Mr. Grady graciously stepping up. Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Grady as the Select Board representative to the Affordable Housing Trust?
I'd like to move to appoint Paul Grady to the Select Board Representative to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All right, all those present, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Okay. We have three appointments, reappointments for the Cohasset Cultural Council, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Hopple, Mr. Sheffield. I think we can probably just do these appointments all at once. Would anyone like to make the motion to approve the reappointments?
I make a motion to approve those three appointments.
Second.
All those present, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
All right. The board all voted aye. All right. 7:08 p.m. We're getting there, Mr. Lampke. We're getting a little closer.
Sorry.
It's too efficient. All right. Is it okay if I read the hearing notice, or do we really have to wait until 7:10? It's okay, we'll wait. Are there any public comments? Nope.
It's on the agenda for 7:10.
What is?
The Cohasset Yacht Club licenses.
I have something I just gotta just bring up for you. It's all just a technical thing, so consider this to be a town manager update, I'm coming in early, so. Back in, back in 2022, it's like we're authorized additional bonding under a community septic program. The towns were taking part in it for more than a decade with their old company blankets. Let's help people upgrade their subjects where they're out of compliance by getting low-cost financing. The town was the actual issuer, so town maybe approved the initial, maybe initial approval back in 2011, and then the board, and again, I have Gene's signature as the clerk of the back on March 4th, 2022, approved the issuance of the last 100,000, not up to 100,000. They're just issuing the first 50 of that 100,000 now, so you all just need to sign.
Okay.
So it's already approved. This is literally just a mysterious thing, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to explain what it was, and the town isn't owed the money. This is actually owed by the homeowners who borrow through the slow interest loan program to upgrade their subjects, or to make a super connection thing. As one in the process now, as the other one is
Okay.
When the code treasurer collects
7:10. All right, I'll read the hearing notice. Okay, 7:10 p.m. We're gonna read the public hearing notice as everyone signs this other document. All right. The Cohasset Select Board, and this is relating to the Cohasset Yacht Club application for an annual liquor license. The Cohasset Select Board acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. At 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcock Commons Cohasset, MA, to consider the application of Cohasset Yacht Club for a new onsite Section 12 All Alcohol Annual License. The proposed manager is Eric Cruz. The licensed premises is located at 99 Howard Gleason Road, Cohasset, MA, Mass. Proposed hours of operation are Wednesday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The property consists of one large room on the ground floor, including a great room, restroom, storage, and kitchen and rear, additional seating areas on balcony and bar on second floor, with annual outdoor deck on second level. Total square footage is 3,130 square feet. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. Public can also attend via Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda. When posted, the agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.org. In the meeting/hearing notices of the calendar section located on the bottom of the front page of the website. And I probably didn't need to read that, because I read it originally while we continued it, but in an abundance of caution, we read it again. So, Mr. Lampke, would you like to give a brief overview, or I'm happy to let the applicant provide?
Sure. Typically, the applicant will present the question basis far from the board, and the public can then ask questions. I'm happy to answer any
Okay. So we'll give the applicant the floor.
Totally. Thank you, everyone. Good evening again. My name is Ryan Gosda from McDermott Quilty &amp; Miller, and I'm an attorney representing the Cohasset Yacht Club. Eric Cruz, who is the president and the proposed manager of record of the club, is on the call as well. As was mentioned, this is an application for a new Section 12 Annual Club License for the yacht club on Howard Gleason Road. As I'm sure the board is aware, the club has been in operation at this location for well over 100 years, so they've been active in the community for quite some time. The club property itself, again, not to belabor a point with the long intro, but it currently consists of a two-story structure on the cove, with the first floor largely comprised of its great hall, and the second floor is proposed to be renovated to now include a new service bar and an additional seating area with an outdoor deck on the second floor as well. To that end, we've submitted this application to appropriately have a Section 12 Club License put in place so that the club can serve alcoholic beverages, alcoholic beverages within the interior portion of the club to their members and guests as an additional amenity at the property. Basically, this will bring everything in-house within the club so that they don't need to pull one-day liquor licenses or to hire third parties anytime that they have an event or a special function at the property. The overall capacity for the property is 208 persons and is approximately 3,100 square feet. And as you heard earlier, the hours of operation are 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Wednesday through Friday, and 12:00 p.m. noon to 10:00 p.m. Saturday to Sunday, and the club is typically closed on Monday and Tuesdays, except during holidays where they might have a special function on some type of holiday, such as Labor Day or Memorial Day. Eric Cruz, as I mentioned, will be the manager of record. He's currently the president of the club, so he is intimately aware of the operations within the club. He is a U.S. citizen, a Massachusetts resident, and is familiar with the rules and regulations regarding the service of alcohol. That being said, he's basically serving as an interim manager of record at this point, assuming the license is approved. The build-out for the bar on the second floor is anticipated to take approximately four months, at which point in time, prior to operations commencing within the club under the license, a new manager of record, such as a GM, would be appointed, who is fully tip-certified and everything that goes along with it. In terms of timing, as I mentioned, approximately four months to complete the build-out of the renovations on the second floor, with a target opening date for that to be operational by Memorial Day. Having said that, we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you all might have, but we would ask that the petition be granted.
I would invite any comments from the public. If there's anyone here who would like to provide an initial comment or question on the application? Nope. Is there anyone online? Nope. Any fellow Select Board members have any questions?
No.
I have a disclosure. I am a member of the yacht club. However, I have no particular opinion on this, and there's nothing in my membership that would influence one way or the other how I will vote on this issue.
Mr. Lampke, are there any, anything you think the board should consider?
Well, you're familiar with the club. It's been here a long time. The idea behind an annual license would be that it's serving some type of a public need, and I imagine they expect to have functions there, and that was, I think, the original basis of their inquiry when they started looking into getting a year-round license. As Mr. Gosda said, they're doing some major renovations there, so the board needs to decide, number one, if the proposed manager is a suitable character, to serve as the manager, even though we're serving as a temporary manager. And secondly, are you satisfied that it will serve a public need? That's, those are the discussion matters with you. When you read the notice, I didn't hear it say Monday and Tuesday open on holidays. This is something we discussed a while ago with them, so the board can, included their vote of approval for the hours, Monday hours and Monday holidays. I think that was what their intent was.
The proposed hours of operation are Wednesday through Friday, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. And Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
But I don't know if it was a supplement to the application, but I know this came up before, if they want to step to the board, if they will accept an oral request from Mr. Gosda to amend the application to include Monday holidays and what the hours would be for Monday holidays.
Yeah, if I might, I do believe we submitted a supplement to the board indicating that. So it would be those same hours of operations, with the exception of Monday and Tuesday, to the extent a legal holiday falls on one of them.
And the hours you propose there are?
Eric, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe they would be the same as perhaps the Wednesday to the Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
That's correct.
The board doesn't include Monday holidays, and I don't know of any Tuesday holidays, but during the course of the year, there's often a Monday holiday that's not included in the approval from the board. They wouldn't be able to open on those days. They'd be coming back in most likely for a temporary one-day amendment to their license. If the board wants to be more efficient in terms of their licensing, you could include that in whatever approval we make.
Okay. We do know that when we haven't approved it on a holiday, we've gotten Seri Adam request for one-day licenses on the holidays, so it might be more efficient just to approve the application as supplemented by the applicant for them Monday or Tuesday, as the case may be for a holiday.
Couldn't pause for a minute, so I could speak to Mr. Creighton for a moment.
Sure.
Sorry.
No.
If your discussion is about yacht club members, I am also a yacht club member in regard to that.
Basically, that I'll
Did anyone else see?
There were several people who may be members.
Are you a member, Ellen?
No.
Okay. We have a form that's not a member.
Do either of you, our members, hold any office in the club?
No. No.
I actually currently dealing with this issue in another community, where some members of the licensing authority are members of the club. You don't have any financial interest in it. The Ethics Commission, however, recommends that you make a disclosure and file a disclosure under Section 23B3 of the state ethics law. Some of them seem to be popping up in different places and maybe reading about it in the papers, I don't know, but because you do have a member, are a member of the club, they recommend that you make a disclosure, because someone, even though you don't have the financial interest, someone could conclude that you are influenced by your relationship and association with the club, and that you are unduly influenced. It's the appearance of conflict, section of the conflict law. Good news is that if that is a possibility, you can dispel that possibility by making a disclosure to your appointing authority. As you're elected, your appointing authority is the public, so you have to make a disclosure on the disclosure form to the town clerk, and I recommend that you make it as you just done at the meeting.
If I could clarify, though, were you saying the disclosure has to be written, or is it sufficient that it be spoken in public?
Technically, under the conflict law, a disclosure has to be in writing. You can take any variety of forms, but there is a form that the Ethics Commission has that enables people to fill it out. As I say, I'm dealing with this in another community, so it happens to be timely.
Does the disclosure need to be provided prior to any deliberation on the issue?
Yes. Or you can participate. You run the, the risk that you run is that under Section 23B3
I understand the risks.
Okay.
I'm trying to make sure I understand my personal guardrails and my ability to participate in the conversation or to vote on the issue. So if I understand correctly, I should not participate in the deliberation on the issue until I have filed in writing my disclosure. Is that correct?
That would be the most conservative and appropriate advice that I would, that I would make.
Mr. Lampke, could I ask a clarifying question? Mr. Plex and Mr. Creighton simply recused themselves and stepped out of the room. Would that address the issue in its entirety?
Yes.
Later.
I was gonna email you, but this is a lot easier. By the time we all wait for me to get the email, well, this is easy.
All right. I'll just, just cut the board
Oh, well, I was not aware of the need to. But now this is even better. Have a very long discussion.
Okay. So there's three left. We still have a quorum. Ms. Mar, before we vote, is there any, any comment or opinion you have?
Yes, I'd like to know if the police chief quickly has weighed in on this.
So he does it, please do a background check?
Yeah. Yeah, in the packet, we do have a memo from Police Chief Quigley as it relates to the background check, and it was fine.
Okay. But he normally would not weigh in on, you know, it's going from an event-based facility now to a five-day-a-week bar, bar for members, basically.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's in his purview to weigh in or not, or if the neighbors have been talked to.
Has the yacht club talked with the neighbors?
I know that we did send out the required butter notices to all the direct neighbors within the area, and I do believe some discussions haven't had with respect to the neighbors that they know that this is coming. I don't know if Eric has any additional insight.
Yes. We spoke with both the neighbors. One of them was at a meeting that we had and is extremely supportive, and the other who was not there. So one of our neighbor, one of our neighbors is a member, and the other neighbor sent an email unsolicited to all of you, I believe, which I can find and read forward if you'd like me to. And it was very much in support. He's a non-member.
Mr. Senior, do you know if Chief Quigley has any concerns, one way or another?
I think it's been raised. I mean, I understand what Slavomir Mars' question is, and it's something that has to be weighed by the board if there's more issues. I mean, I think, I know the facility is usually very busy in the summer regardless. If this does change its seasonality to the fall, that does, you know, it's a potential impact, but it's something I think would have to be judged as you go.
And in terms of parking, is there sufficient parking if you were to intensify the use from your perspective?
There, there is, because we have an unused piece of land that we've opened up for parking that people are starting to park on, and we don't have an issue with overflow parking, and we're likely gonna make that into a more efficient parking lot as well. We just haven't done it. But there is, we have plenty of parking above the, above the club.
Mr. Grady?
I'd be very, I'd be much more comfortable hearing it from Chief Quigley himself, what his thoughts are around this, quite honest with you, before I was willing to jump into it.
Are there options we have, Mr. Lampke, to continue this discussion, to allow for Chief Quigley to weigh in?
You can move to continue the matter to another date. It would be good if the license application applicant agrees to that continuance.
We'd have to check with Chief Quigley's schedule, but if a minimal to the applicant, I might suggest it might be most efficient to do a motion to continue this hearing to our next Select Board meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, which is November 7th, so about two weeks from now. Is that a minimal to the applicant?
Have to speak with the club. I know that they were anxious to get things going somewhat as soon as possible, given this would be our, at this point, second continuance. I don't know if it's an option for the board to, rather than formally continue the hearing, but to just technically defer its vote until it's received a memo from the police chief or something to that extent, rather than hold this open for a continuance. I don't know if that is an option.
What are they suggesting, that you vote subject to Chief Quigley's recommendation?
He's suggesting to defer the vote subject to a memo from Chief Quigley, so we, I would imagine we still have to continue the hearing, though, to ultimately vote.
You still need to have a, have a vote.
Yeah.
Either way, whether it's the vote is deferred or the matter is continued to the 7th. I would also point out that it's a seasonal license, and technically, a seasonal license can go from April 1st through January 15th. Most places, the seasonal license goes from April 1st to like November 30th, 31st, and places within be closed for those few couple of months. So this is really giving them the opportunity. I'm not, I'm not a member of the club, I've never been there, but it's an opportunity for them to be able to operate during those couple of months that otherwise they wouldn't be able to have a operating liquor license. I appreciate that you would want to have Chief Quigley's input, obviously.
We're gonna get him on now?
Chief Quigley's gonna hop on, so.
I was explaining the difference.
Ms. Mar?
Yeah, I just, this, this is a big deal. It's not a usual one-day liquor license that we grant, and this, this is, in my opinion, a big deal in terms of having, even though it's a club and it's a private membership, you know, guests can be brought in. Parking is difficult along Howard Gleason Road, and even though it's seasonal, April 1st to January 15th is, is really, you're just missing a few months. I wouldn't really call that a seasonal license. I think it's kind of misleading to call it seasonal. So, and I don't have the email, Mr. Gazdav from, or Mr. Cruz, from whomever you said emailed the Select Board. I just went through my email for the last two months. I don't, I don't have anything from anyone on any neighbor. I don't know if my, my colleagues have it, but I, I would like, you know, more time for us to discuss this, the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the town of having, you know, an additional liquor establishment. Like I said, I think it's a much bigger deal than a one-day license that we typically grant.
I would have to agree with that.
I hear you. But just for purpose of the record, not to add fuel to the fire here, but this is an application seeking the issuance of an annual club license and not seasonal, just so we're clear.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Lampke said it was a seasonal license, that's
I was explaining the difference between a seasonal license and an annual license in terms of when they can be operated. I believe they, they have a seasonal license. They're now seeking to basically change the classification from a seasonal license to an annual license.
So I believe Chief Quigley is on. Would you mind promoting him if he's in the audience?
Hello, I'm here.
Oh, hey, chief, how are you?
Sorry, I, I, I'm on my phone, so I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, thank you. So right now, chief, we are considering an application from the Cohasset Yacht Club to have an annual license to operate essentially Wednesday through Sunday and on holidays. An annual liquor license. And we were wondering if you had any thoughts, concerns, or other feedback you wanted to provide.
So I talked to Detective Lieutenant Lopes and Detective Hall, who conducted the background investigation on the licensee. There was no issues with him. As far as the impact of the business, we don't know. You know, I, I can tell you the history of the club. There's, we've, we've never had a problem there. And when they do have events where there's going to be, you know, any type of, you know, more than, say, 100 people, they do hire a police detail. And they do that, you know, over the holidays, you know, the Memorial Day, 4th of July, and Labor Day. There's always a detail there. You know, it, it, it's hard to say how this will impact it. It depends on how they plan on running it. And that, you know, goes more towards their, their business model. And that's really not something that, that, that the police department, you know, delves into. Maybe we can be guided by Mr. Lampke.
So Chief Quigley mentioned that when they do have large functions there, they can have a police detail. The board can make that a condition of the license. You can impose reasonable terms and conditions on any alcohol license or other licenses that you're issuing. And it's not unusual, by observations, to see the climate that an establishment has to have, some type of crowd control or detail if there's a certain size of an event there.
And no, no disrespect to the folks at the yacht club, but they're not exactly a wild crew. They, you know, it's generally very quiet there. And the, the details are more, more for parking if there's going to be people parked along Howard Gleason Road. And, you know, one of the things that, that does come to mind, we, the board talked about operating on holidays. And those holidays I mentioned, you know, prior come to mind. So you'd probably, you know, if you look at the 4th of July and Memorial Day, if, if that, if it's a Monday holiday, the hours may have to be adjusted because it's more of an afternoon-type thing. So, you know, 5:00 to 10:00 or 5:00 to 11:00 or whatever the board decides the hours are going to be. They should really be, probably be broadened if, 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 if the board wants to allow, you know, the, the establishment to operate on those holidays that are more and more, you know, quote unquote, you know, daytime cookout-type holidays.
I, I will also state, once again, regarding the parking, we have a, a piece of property that we've cleared for parking. And it has plenty of space. Where, if you see overflow cars on the road right now, it's partially because culturally, we're just trying to make sure we get people used to parking up there. We just cleared it. But there is, there is plenty of parking up there. We're just trying to get everybody culturally in tune to parking up there. But we can accelerate those, those efforts if, if that's an issue. It's our goal, anyway. We don't want people parking on the street. And the police have been very helpful for every party we've ever had. But we're very aware of that issue. And our purchase of the property is, is to help contain that.
Ms. Mar, Mr. Grady, any further comments?
I'm just still, I think, I need a little time because I think, in essence, what you're asking is to open up a members-only bar in Cohasset. It's just gonna run as a bar. So I don't know the impact, and I was just listening to the chief. Not averse to it, but I still think that we should find out what the neighbors think. I don't have your emails. And because, again, it's just nobody up at the bar in Cohasset.
I'll end up finding this email as soon as this meeting is over, I'm sure. I, because I certainly can't find it right now. I apologize. But I will find it and send it to you immediately.
Okay. Ms. Mar, any further comments?
Yeah, I, I would just like a little bit more time. I appreciate the, the attempt for, you know, the engagement of, of the members of the yacht club and the convenience of, I'm not going to hire out and get one-day licenses all the time for the many events that you run. I think it's, you know, and I appreciate the fact that you hire a police detail when you have an event. But it's foreseeable, you know, in a community spot, your community of the yacht club, that after race day or something, that in excess of 100 or 150 people can gather because you have the space and the capacity. And if that had been a planned event, you would have hired a police detail. And I just don't, you know, you can't plan for those things. You can't plan on how many people are going to be there or not be there. And I, I just personally would like a little bit more time to really make sure we're doing the right thing, not only for the yacht club, but for the community. Because it is, you, you know, the, the American Legion Post is technically a private club, open to members, and, and this would be, you know, a similar thing.
So it sounds like the board would like to continue this hearing to a later date. And what I might suggest is I'll entertain a motion to that end. And we can work with you, Mr. Gazdev and Cruz, on a mutually convenient date for you, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Would that be later than November 7th? Or does that still seem to be the target date?
I, I think we could work on that date. Yep. All right, is, would anyone on the board like to make a motion to continue this to November 7th?
I'd make a motion and continue this hearing until November 7th. And at that time, I hope we have the information for the neighbors and pertinent information to the chief and maybe how to handle if the crowds get bigger and along those lines. But November 7th.
So. I'll second the motion.
Okay. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Jeanne Hilly Dipple dot. Okay, thank you.
Just have one more question, Jeanne. Mr. Gazdev, if we have questions, do we have your contact info so that maybe we can get them to you ahead of time for November?
Absolutely. I can type it in the chat. It should be in the application, but I don't know if I can type it. No. But I, Jim Lampke has it. He can certainly give it to you all.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What email address should I forward this to when I find it? What's the best one to reach everybody?
Well, we all, we all have our own. You can forward it to Tracy? Tracy, Ms. Connors. TConnors@CohassetMA.org. Sorry, Tracy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Attorney Gazdev.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. I'll see you on 7th. Do you have any other questions? Don't hesitate to each other to, to me.
And maybe the board can facilitate questions to you for some suggestions. Okay, moving on. We are at the select board goals portion of the meeting, which is updates and discussions, starting with affordable housing slash One Pleasant Street. This is our town hall project. It looks to me that there may be some quorums in the audience. I don't know if you want to call the order, any of your, actually, I should get our fellow select board members. Are there any quorums that need to open? Mr. Kirsch?
Oh, here's the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. So we have a forum, and I'm going to call our committee to order.
Okay.
John McGee, the Cohasset Housing Authority, we got the forum.
Okay. Is there a quorum for the Affordable Housing Trust? Okay. You're on the trust? You have four, Mr. Grady. Does that make you a quorum now? Oh, he hasn't been sworn in. I was saying you have Mr. Grady now. You're the latest member. I was curious if that makes you. He hasn't been sworn in yet. That's the problem. Okay. Actually, is Mr. Carr on the? Ted Carr, is he in the, is there anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience who's on any of these committees? Affordable Housing Steering, Affordable Housing Trust, Cohasset Housing Authority, raise their hand? I'm sorry, in the virtual audience on Zoom? No one? Okay, okay. I just want to check and make sure, just in case we do have a quorum. All right, so Mr. Kirsch, do you want to call your, have you already called your?
We have called the order.
Oh, everyone's, okay, all right.
Are you going to ask for open remarks from each committee or?
Right now, we wanted to do a presentation on the project. And then we can go to remarks. But I think having some, you know, presentation on what we're actually, what the agenda item is, I think, might be helpful, including for everyone. So we might need to move the TV so everyone, so the audience can see.
I forget if it's going to change the, the view of the camera.
It's okay. It's soon going to be a PowerPoint, anyway. Okay. Tracy's pulling it up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate everyone here. As you know, the select board is moving forward with a proposal to buy One Pleasant Street. We've signed a PNS for 9.1 million. This was a building that came into our, our view serendipitously, at least, I think, in our opinion, as we were searching for space for a town hall. That was really our focus. We viewed the affordable housing opportunities within the building as a positive for the town. And I hope, at the end of the day, everyone else here does too. I realize the devil might be in the details, but the select board has put this on the warrant. We have a 5-0 recommendation for this project. And advisory has already voted on it and has a unanimous recommendation with, I think, one extension. So with that, and the warrant is already been printed and will be in everyone's mailboxes this weekend. Ms. Leary?
Thank you. So this is just a high-level presentation on the building, the potential uses of the building. We also have Maureen O'Hagan, who is part of MCO and associate. She's the Program Housing Director. And she will speak more to the lottery process in managing that for the affordable housing units, as well as the workforce housing units. So One Pleasant Street, I think everyone knows, there's four deeded affordable units. And there's nine unrestricted affordable units. There's been several questions regarding how the property is going to be managed. And it's the town's desire to hire a property management company. That property management company will take care of the initial setup, the monthly management fees, the maintenance, and any additional fees associated with the property. The factors that go into a property management company are the overall responsibilities. So the services they provide and the property type. So the conditions, the location, there are all these factors that go into the fee because everyone's asking, you know, how much does the property management company cost? Well, all of these factors go into it. And while the average is anywhere between 6% to 8% of the rental income, the challenges, the location, the number of units, 13 units, is very small for many companies. So to find a property management company that this is the niche is something we've been trying to find. We've located two companies that could possibly be interested in managing this for us. But these are the factors that go into the cost. So next would be the expenses. It's common utilities, it's appliance replacement, painting, clean-out, miscellaneous repair, and insurance. Lots of questions regarding the town insuring these units as far as liability and what we're responsible for. You'll see that later on in the presentation. So we want to go into what is 40B? A lot of questions have come about from the residents, you know, what is 40B? And it's 10% of everybody's, community's housing should be affordable. And that's really what 40B means to us. So next is the area median income. And that is the eligibility income standard. And that is how everything is derived. So when we talk about AMI for Cohasset, it's $149,300. You'll see here, there's several levels. You have at or below 30% AMI, between 31% and 50% AMI, and between 51% and 80% AMI. These are the affordable buckets, if you will. And then on the next slide, you'll see that what we're targeting is the 80% of area median income for the affordable units. You can target anywhere between 30% to 80% for the, for those affordable units. 80 and below is affordable. 80 to 120, or anything to 120, would be workforce housing. Excellent. So here are some income eligibility requirements based on household size. So household 1 to 4, you can see the income limits here. So next, we want to talk about mixed-income community housing. So what's affordable, what's workforce? So the rents cannot exceed 80% AMI for an affordable unit. The maximum rents are listed here. And what we see is a one-bedroom maximum rent would be $2,142. A two-bedroom is $2,300. When you look at this and you look at the workforce housing, rents can range anywhere from 60% to 120% AMI. Once again, the maximum rents are listed here. And they're based on 100% AMI at $2,600 for a one-bedroom and $2,800 for a two-bedroom. You know, we're, we're looking at this workforce housing for those nine additional units. So we'll help people live in the community that they work in. The apartments will be moderately priced for any, anyone that's looking to rent an apartment. Of course, you know, it, it doesn't go into, you just want an apartment. You apply for it, you get it because you work in the town. There is a, and there's a lottery process. And Maureen O'Hagan is on it. She can speak a little bit to the lottery process and how it works.
Yes, I'm here. Basically, for the lottery, there is a 60-day marketing period. I mean, I'll give you a highlight of the whole process. For this property in LEU, which is a local action unit application, would need to be prepared, submitted to the town to sign off, then to DHCD. Because all 13, because you have more than 25% of the 14 units are affordable, all 14 units would be encountered on the SHI. Although just the four units at 80% AMI would, are considered affordable. But the total project will be added to the SHI. So 14 more units for the town of Cohasset. So once DHCD approves the LEU application, we need to market the property for 60 days. And then, within that 60-day timeframe there, there is a public information meeting that we would handle. And that's a meeting that we review the project, we review the eligibility criteria, we talk about the lottery, we talk about the eligibility and the documentation that, that tenants or applicants need to provide to have the opportunity to participate in the lottery. But essentially, after the application deadline, all applications are, are reviewed for eligibility. Those that are, are eligible will receive a lottery code. And the lottery code is what will be announced during the lottery. Now, we have four units at 80%, and it sounds like the other nine units will be distributed by lottery as well. So what we would do in preparing for the lottery, you know, on the application, we'd ask people, are they at 80% or are they at higher? And then we would do two separate lotteries. One lottery for the 80% units, both of the local pool and an open pool. 70% of those four units can be considered local. The 120, the workforce unit at 120%, I think you can do whatever you want. If you want all those to be local, that's fine. I wouldn't advertise it that way because you want to encourage non-local people to apply as well in case there are not enough local applicants to fill the unit. So literally, everyone who is approved for the lottery gets the code. Their code, along with everybody else, is literally thrown into a bucket. And we draw them out randomly. And that will create the lottery list. So we'll do essentially four draws. One for the 80% units, local pool. One for the 80% unit, open pool, which includes the local applicants as well. So the local applicants have two opportunities per unit, whereas someone who is non-local will have one. And then we'll also do the local pool for the workforce units and the open pool for the workforce units. Again, local applicants would have two opportunities per unit. So then, post lottery, what we do is we break out the units by the order they have to release a unit. I don't know, I mean, if all the bedroom sizes have been determined, if they're all one bedroom, that makes it easy. So usually, it's by the draw. First person for one bed, second, third, fourth. If there are other bedroom sizes, then we would break out the list based on your bedroom size and pool. And that's done after the lottery. So post lottery, we would email the applicants the results as drawn, which is done via Zoom, so it's public and recorded. And then, attached to that email, we send the list of the order people will have the opportunity to release. And that, of course, is only if there are different bedroom sizes. And then, at that point, we turn over the list to the leasing office. And the leasing office would go through the leasing office screening. So they'll pull credit, probably pass landlord, perhaps criminal checks. If the applicant passes the leasing office screening, then they would be offered a unit. If applicants have a Section 8 or other housing voucher, then Section 8 also needs to approve the property and the rents before the Section 8 tenant can move into the property.
Why don't we go through the whole presentation?
Okay, so there's just one more slide. And it's just about the insurance requirements. So under the statute, the town can be liable for negligence or wrongful acts. And it's a cap of up to $100,000 per claim. And of course, the town, in its capacity as a landlord, has, is liable for failing to comply with state sanitary code, fair housing acts. So anything that a private landlord would be required to be liable for, we also. That's really it for the presentation. If you have any questions?
So let me open it up to my fellow board members. Are there any questions from the floor, including you, Ms. Marr? Okay. Mr. Kirsch?
Oh, here's Housing Steering Committee. Just specific to the PowerPoint presentation. You had talked about workforce housing. So right now, there's only four units under deed restriction. So only those four units would be considered for the 40B affordable and workforce housing. Are you planning to have nine units to be deeded for workforce housing? Because right now, the other nine units are going to be at market rate, right?
No.
Are they, don't they have to be deeded?
The other nine, the other nine units, and this is where we're talking right now with the lottery consultant, we intend to rent as workforce housing.
So how do you do that without deeding the property? What is your restriction on property for workforce housing only as opposed to market rate housing? So we went through two of the board of selectmen, prior to board of selectmen, myself, attended a meeting at the Lawson, which is behind, it was a shipyard, which I believe you and I had talked about as well, Michelle. And where it is deeded for workforce housing as well as affordable housing. And then the third bit was market rate housing. So my question is, if you're going to tell people it's workforce housing, how are you deeding and putting that in place? Because right now, only four units are deeded for affordable. The other nine units are not deeded at all, but I'm aware of, or have any constraints also. My question is, how are you doing that?
If I could interject? I think I can answer that question.
Thank you, Maureen.
I just did a project in another town. And there was one unit at 110%. And it was homeownership, and that's shouldn't make a difference. So the town actually created a separate deed rider for that 110% unit. So for an affordable property, a regulatory agreement is prepared by the state for the four affordable units at 80%. So I don't, and this, your attorney would have to confirm this, but I fully expect that that regulatory agreement could be amended to fit the needs of the community, to put those nine units at 120%.
Yeah, and thank you, Paul. This is something that, unfortunately, our attorney was not able to attend because she's another town's council and they have special town meeting right now. But this is something that we will certainly prepare, along with other questions that we're asking her to look into. And, you know, candidly, we may end up hiring special counsel too, if need be, on some of these issues, as well as we continue to proceed.
Yeah, and I might further add. As I think most of you know, I was originally on the Affordable Housing Committee when we set it up and then when we resurrected the Housing Trust. And previous to that, when I was in Boston, I did a lot of housing work and worked with a lot of nonprofits. So I'm a little bit familiar with this. I was actually one of the original idea of requiring a percentage of new construction to be reserved for affordable things. I think that was the Manino administration. I was part of those task forces. So I watched this with great interest. So we start with grabbing four. The other ones, the Select Board is basically is the town's landlord. And we have, we are looking to figure out a good way to handle those because one of the attractions of Pleasant Street was that we were able to secure these units. Now, we have protected the town from 40B for the next, till the next census because we're below the threshold. But looking ahead, number one, we wanted to see if there's a way that we could have housing for teachers, police, and fire. And so we're looking to have the other units be available in a manner that they can be used for that. There's questions as to can we incorporate local preference? We don't know the answer to that. I think that's a very popular thing. A lot of people, seniors who are, want to stay in town. We don't, haven't quite figured that out. But the good news is that all of these units, which are kind of, they're above and beyond the cost of one Pleasant Street for our town hall. It's like a bonus. And we are fully committed to making sure that they are used for affordable. We have four already, which are deeded. The mechanism to protect the other ones so they will be long-term affordable, we haven't figured that out, but this is clearly our intent. And learning from, you know, the various appointed boards, what you might think as to mechanisms and also dealing with our attorney to get this done. But that's one of the real attractions of One Pleasant Street, is that we have the option to do that, and that is the intent.
Mr. Gama?
May I ask the board if you're aware of the number-one objective of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust for the town of Cohasset?
I have Section 55(c) of the Municipal Affording Housing Trust Fund in front of me. I'm happy to read that into the record, if that would be helpful.
As a community, as the number-one objective. Very straightforward. Create more units. This project takes one away. It takes one away. That building is not going to be built, it's not going to be occupied, without 14 units deeded. That's what the permit calls for. So my point, my point about this is very simple. All right? We're sitting here talking about this as if, I think that the selectman speaking just a moment ago pointed out that they reserve the units. No, they haven't. They're part of the permit. Right? So this, and Chris, I'm not directing this, and you in particular, so, so. We're looking at this from the trust standpoint, saying, that's great, this is wonderful. There's a lot of devil in these details. Because between these two committees, we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 years of experience with the regulation and specifics that go into affordable housing, not just the law, but the finances. And we were called at two meetings, we asked some very specific questions, and we've never received the answers for those questions. So I have to ask, if we're going to step outside of effective process and the board, and Ms. Moner is well aware of this, having now served on two such town board committees, your board of folks that take in information from all towns, take a look at your agenda. You've got an alcohol anomaly. You've got other things coming up. And that's exactly the reason for employing committees, is to be able to filter through much of this and bring the necessary information for your decision-making so that you can employ the leadership from within the board. Right? And what I'm getting at the moment is two committees here, who frankly have been in the dark from the outset of this, have asked questions and received no answers. And look, if you want, if you're going to go through with it, that's fine. But I'll tell you that from my very, my very own perspective, speaking as chairman and doing the analytics on this, and having lived most of my life in finance, the trust has one primary benefactor. Can anyone identify?
CPC.
Exactly. CPC. Right? The trust has been, the CPC has been good enough to grant to us nearly a million, no, actually, a little bit more than a million dollars. We've got a decent balance, we bought a property, we've got, we funded partially another one starting. Using a million-three of the CPC's money, quite literally takes it out of the possible, the realm of possibility that might be granted to the trust for other projects for which the Steering Committee has been working, on which the Steering Committee has been working, which create new units. Why? We might be in compliance, but we're in compliance with the 2020 census. And the idea, how many, how many, how many housing units have been constructed between 20 and 23? We're not going to be compliant unless we add units now. This doesn't add units. I mean, it's not a bad project. I'm simply looking at the process and the funding and the lack of, the lack of engagement for the folks who have some expertise in this area. And I'm just asking, why?
So Mr. Gama? Mr. Gama, thank you for your comments. I do want Mr. Plex to respond, and I will respond directly afterwards.
Understood. You had some important points to make, I'm glad you raised them. I do want to make very clear, though, our meetings are public. All are encouraged to attend and participate. Every meeting includes the opportunity for public comment, including this one. I gave you time, I'd appreciate it if you gave me time as well.
I just want to make one point of clarification.
Please.
We've had no communication from the board and we've had no appointment from the board since the board was reconstituted in July, or actually, after the, after the election. So
Thank you.
While the meetings may be public, the fact of the matter is that that is a lousy thing to lean back.
Mr. Gama, I would ask you to confine your comments to allow Mr. Plex to continue speaking.
Thank you. The second point I'd like to make is that this is a unique town hall project. Most town hall projects throughout the Commonwealth, I would argue throughout the country, do not include any affordable housing component whatsoever. This project includes four, capital A, explicitly 40B qualified units. In addition to nine units that under town ownership would be, and it'll excuse some complicated language, lowercase a, affordable, set aside for workforce housing. I understand that we need to make sure we work through the rest of the details. The devil in the details is a very true statement here. There's a lot to this, we have to get it right. So I want to make it clear, this is a unique project to encourage affordable housing in Cohasset. I like that about this project. I like what that says about Cohasset. The second point I want to make sure I make clear is, under town ownership, those nine units are affordable, lowercase a. Under private ownership, they are market rate. So you made the point several times that this does not create units. I would argue it does create affordable units because those nine units would not be affordable outside of town ownership. And then the last thing I would point out is that I'm not going to bother you with reading what it says in state statute about the Affordable Housing Trust, but I can. And I do think it is in keeping with the mandate of the Affordable Housing Trust to support this project.
And I just want to clarify too that I did, as the Chair of the Select Board, email Mr. Gama in August after Mr. Senior and Ms. Leary talked with Mr. Gama about this proposal. This was when the proposal was in executive session. I did not hear a response. And
I did do a forensic. There was no such email ever received at any of my addresses.
I'm just looking at my email right now. And it's unfortunate that that electronic back and forth did not come to fruition, Mr. Gama. And then, following, following from that, I did email you, Mr. Gama, and you, Mr. Kirsch, in early October to say, we want to work with you, we want to address your concerns and questions. If you have any questions, please let me know. I also emailed Mr. Carr. I got questions about CPC. I wrote an extensive email back to all of you. And I appreciate, Mr. Kirsch, that you've been engaging with our town manager and assistant town manager. And, Mr. Gama, what I got for you is we have questions, but no answers. And so then, I went to the Affordable Housing Trust to figure out what, your meeting, to figure out, well, what are your questions? Because we want to work with you in good faith. And so I saw that you had a list of questions and I asked Mr. Senior to reach out to Cassandra Fair and get those questions so we could follow up and figure out answers for you. And so I just want the public to understand, we are not enemies or adversaries. We want to work together. We share a common goal of affordable housing. And I'm sorry that we had technical snafus early on that if we didn't have them, might have not led to this situation. But we do want to work together. And we do think, and I think, Mr. Plex, well-stated that this isn't simply about, at least to me, this isn't simply about just creating units to meet our 40B requirement so we can avoid more affordable housing in Cohasset. This is about trying to address a town need. And this is, this is my, my opinion, and I'm not saying that you disagree. This is my opinion that Cohasset needs more affordable Little A housing for our town employees, for our teachers, who are living with their parents or who can't afford to live in Cohasset, or for our firefighters who live in the Cape. And we struggle with having people live in Cohasset and work here. It's a real problem. And so we are trying to make, again, it's a unique problem, but we're trying to make some inroads to have a unique project that also is unique as to the affordable housing aspect. And this is hard for us because we haven't done it before. And so we're asking for your help.
If we're late in the game to ask for the help, just so that everybody is aware, the reason that there is a Steering, the reason that there is an Affordable Housing Trust active is not just to create units. That's the, the outright objective, for obvious reasons, to keep us in compliance. The reason for keeping us in compliance is so we can control the character of our community so that we are not subject to an unfriendly 40B. That's the reason. As a result of that, yes, affordable units, workforce units, veterans' units are all part of what we would like to achieve. But it can't be done in a vacuum. We've made some incredible progress in a short period of time. And I'm simply looking at this project and saying, look, no matter what, it's permitted for 14 units. Okay? It's going, it's going to be occupied with 14 units. The administration of those units is up to you. I simply look at it from my perspective. And that is, not only as a trustee, but someone who's made a living in finance. And I'm looking at the numbers and saying, I'm sorry. There, this, this is a gargantuan task for a board that is a board of generals. And to think that you're just going to hand it off to a property manager is useful from the perspective of the daily operation. from the perspective of the daily operation of it. It's not useful when you think of the long-term operation of it. I'd like to know how it's going to be structured. Be structured in ownership, you've got a condominium, it is a general structure. It's a general structure. How do you separate out that which is proportional to those residential units and that which is proportional to the town? Some, these are some of the simple questions that I have about it. We'd ask these from the beginning. And frankly, there, this is the point. If you're studying this project and the residential portion of this project, by the way, I am not arguing the need for a town hall. The residential portion of this project is an awful lot more complex than I think anyone's given credit for. That's all.
You know, I...
Please.
Yeah, I really have to, it's a little disingenuous to say that, that because we're buying this, that those extra nine units aren't affordable. The way the law works, and this is helpful for everybody to understand, is that if you have a certain number of units and a certain percentage are affordable, then you can count all 14 units towards your affordable need, even though nine of them aren't affordable at all and are market rate for $4,000 a month or whatever. So by us stepping forward and buying it and then reserving those nine units, instead of just being kind of a paper affordable, they're real affordable units. And that's a major, major victory that we've been able to accomplish to increase. Yes, the other, all 14 would have been counted towards our 40B protection, but nine of them wouldn't really have people who need affordable. They would not be, have affordable tenants, if you will. So we've stepped forward and we have made it possible for those nine units to not just count towards an artificial 40B protection number, but actually put real people in there. Real residents of our town could live in them. And we were in the process of developing processes to determine that. And this is where, you know, the various, the Affordable Housing Committee and people like that can assist, right? But it's good to get coming forward. And the other thing is that all of the meetings that we've been had on this have been publicly posted. We have made sure all the information is posted on the town website. We've also instructed the town manager to make sure that the website was changed so it's easier to find out, so you can go to the website and find that. And, you know, if, and sometimes I know in the to and fro of life, we'll miss all of that, but that information has been out there. And specifically, we wanted to have that so the various chairmen, the various chairmen and chairwomen of the various boards and committees would always have a workable way to see what's up and see if there's anything being discussed on the town level that would impact your communities. And we've also tried, I guess, a bit imperfectly, to additionally reach out to people. So we're really trying, but let's keep in mind what we really want out of all of this. We want from, we want a functional town hall, but we really want to build affordable housing and develop on the Select Board level policies that encourage that and make it sustainable and get even more. And I think we're moving in a good direction.
Good evening. I'm Donna McHale, Chair of the Cohasset Housing Department. I'm sure you've done a lot of financial analysis on this project. I think you have. I was wondering if you've given any consideration to including all 13 of the units in the first category instead of A and B or A and little a? That would be good for this town.
We, we have thought about it and I think one of the concerns is that if we did it all at 80% AMI, and this is feedback we've gotten from others in the industry, and I believe Mr. Jeffers may have a view on this too, because I think he reiterated what others were saying, is that given the incomes, you're going to have employees that just miss it, that you're going to have trouble getting the workforce, the workforce housing in at an 80% AMI. And so I think that is a consideration for us as we think about what AMI really to sort of land on, although the AMI is broad for workforce. It could be 80 to 120.
Was a follow-up. Could you make it eight instead of four? We're all here because we believe in affordable housing, each of these committees, as well as the board. And we're very excited about this project, but we'd like to get the most out of it that we can. So could you consider increasing from four to eight?
Can I say one thing for you, Ms. R? That being the case, it means that instead of, any developer or owner who owns this building, what Steve Bomer was speaking to, is required to have four units of affordable housing. Doesn't speak to the other nine, but they're required to have four. So by requiring or not, yes, by going to eight instead of just four, which is what you're currently proposing, you're actually getting an extra four units. So if the town feels like they can afford that, then that kind of...
But in terms of the inventory, I think we've already maxed out the potential of the building by having 25% formally under the 40B program.
But you can make it eight, which is just...
What we're trying to do is bring some community back to Cohasset. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off and I apologize. Do you want to finish your statement?
Say, I think that you also need to worry about your cash flow in time planning, management company, all that. We've talked a lot about the little a and the little a is just as important as the big A, right? In this town, the little a is probably going to get the best of you. You know, in terms of, there would be a lot, big number of people that would be helped by that and then figure out, in the market, you probably have 14, but will you still get 14 or could you use one for a town?
One is...
Just 13, I believe.
I mean, they're all, they're all very important, but what we're trying to do is make a stab, this is a unique opportunity, is to bring some community hopefully back into Cohasset. As you know, we've priced ourselves out of the market and we have firemen living in Halifax, as the chair said, people, teachers living at home, just coming out of school. And this has been just an opportunity, small as it may be, to bring people back into town, create that village atmosphere that we've, that we talk about on 1043 or in the Mariner or like that. You know, Cohasset was and is still a village and it's a pretty tight community, but it's a stab at doing something different. It's unique. It fell on us. We tried to grab it. I'm sorry about any miscommunications that have or have not been put out there, but we have made every attempt to work with the board and to be as transparent as possible. You know, we meet daily again, but this is kind of a seized moment in time. And I don't think it's going to pass our way again. It's just an opportunity to do something and bring something back to Cohasset that's probably been sadly missing for some time now.
Mr. Kirsch.
I just wanted to kind of give you the opinion of our board of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, specifically to some of the comments that have been made so far to let you know where the board stands in their opinion. Certainly, all meetings are public and all meetings are posted on the town website. I understand that. But keeping in spirit of the board, the selectmen or select persons, they work in tandem with all of the committees that are subject matter specific and they need to put them often over subject matters that they're working on. Our board has not been contacted by the Select Board at all to be on our agenda, to come here and be on your agenda. More than we hear from CPC, when they were voting on $1.3 million for affordable housing. Now, in section five, paragraph B subsection two, it does say that they shall meet with the other committees and boards in the town that are specific to the subject matter that they are going to vote money against. And it also says that it's posted for two weeks. So we have heard none of that. Now, in the spirit of affordable housing, we agree with the affordable housing on One Pleasant Street. In fact, we have been working on it for quite some time with the property owners to ensure that we get a credit for the 40 units. We're very happy with it. So if it's 13 units, that's, that's fine as well. We're at our 10.1, 10.2% now until the next census comes out in about nine years. So our board has always been focused on big A for the first four or five years that we've been together. The last couple of years, we've been focused on the small A, which is what you've been talking about, which is workforce housing. We've, we've talked about it for quite some time. How do we make workforce housing available in the town? What is our ability to do so? We have a lot of folks in towns on, on the, of course, the Elder Repairs Board as well. Beth is a member of our committee on behalf of the Elder Repairs Board. The elders are looking to downsize and they don't want to have to move out of town to downsize. So that is our big push right now is the small A, which is what you're talking about. So we champion the small A part of it. We welcome you making the rent per month lower so that folks can qualify for really affordable housing. That's welcome. If we could somehow permanently restrict that, that would be great so that it would always be there. So that will, tenants turn over, it will always be part of workforce housing. There are lots of opportunities in the town for that type of workforce housing that can happen based on projects that have presented to us in the past couple of months and last year. And one of the things that we discussed at our last meeting was, we had heard for the first time that CPC had voted to appropriate $1.3 million specifically to this One Pleasant Street, which we were unanimous in being unsatisfied with the use of funds for that. So we felt that $1.3 million for One Pleasant Street was not an appropriate use of funds from CPC. We would rather see those funds used specifically for the three buckets of preservation, recreation, and affordable housing specifically. This property already has affordable housing, so you're, you're buying a commercial building that already has deeded property as affordable housing. According to what was published in the town website, the Cohasset Financial Planning Group specifically said that they're, they're buying this building and it just so happens to have affordable housing. It was an unanticipated bonus to have the affordable housing. But at CPC, you said you were buying affordable housing. So we were kind of concerned about how you reconciled that. And we don't feel that you're buying affordable housing. You're buying a commercial building specific for the use of a town hall. You're not buying a building for affordable housing and then saying it's unprecedented, but we could use it for a town hall as well. So it's one of the others. We were wondering if you don't take the $1.3 million from CPC and leave that for future use, whether it's to restore 41 Island Historic Town Hall Building or if it's to put more money into affordable housing for small A housing and then only request something between $100,000 and $200,000 with a purpose of managing those affordable units? Because what's going to happen is if the town buys the building, you're going to have upfront the cost of hiring a management company and hiring the, a separate company to do the lottery to get the tenants in there. And then once the tenant's in there, you'll generate between $300,000 and $400,000 in revenue that will then offset what you need to do. And then you haven't determined what you would have to do with that revenue, if that's going to go towards maintaining the 40B properties or if that was going to go into a different fund that the future use of the revenue hasn't been explained. So that, that's the position of our board.
So on the Long Term Finance Report, I will explain that, having helped write that report with my fellow Long Term Finance members, including Mr. Senior, who's right here. So it is accurate that we have been looking for a town hall, a commercial opportunity. And we vetted a lot of different commercial opportunities. And, you know, town government is a tricky animal when it comes to commercial opportunities because these are privately owned buildings right now with owners that probably have financial requirements of their own, including commercial mortgages that they're dealing with. And so to try to have owners that are willing to work with the town and enter into a PNS and then also have that PNS subject to a town meeting vote and a vote at the ballot, you know, that's a heavy lift. And we've managed it with two properties, 135 King Street and with One Pleasant, but it's also made us move pretty quickly. And we only learned of One Pleasant Street as of early August, essentially. So we've had to work very, very, very quickly, which I think is causing some of the friction because between trying to do the PNS, trying to land on the price, trying to do everything all at once, candidly, the affordable housing was viewed as an unanticipated bonus. We viewed it as a positive of One Pleasant instead of a negative, which is why we moved forward with the One Pleasant Street acquisition. And I'm, I'm happy to say that the rest of the members of Long Term Finance, including the Chairs of Advisory, Capital, and the School Committee, all feel the same way. We, you know, we view affordable housing as a positive thing for the town to proceed with, including through this acquisition. So that was the intent of that statement. I don't know if I'd read more into it other than, we weren't viewing this as a negative as a part of this acquisition, but a positive opportunity for the town and viewed it from that light. Mr. Grady, I know you wanted to jump in. I do have some comments about CPC, but I'm happy to...
No, please go ahead. No, go ahead. I'll wrap up.
So on CPC, I understand, and Mr. Senior, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we did look at the finances of CPC. And I will just say that site at 5B refers to the annual study that needs to happen through CPC with the advertised hearing. And I appreciate that the advertised hearing doesn't get a lot of attention through CPC. It didn't when I was on CPC, but that is what that is referred to in terms of inviting all the boards and committees. But I appreciate the need for collaboration too. When it comes to CPC, currently, if all of these projects pass that are now on the warrant in warrant articles, I understand there's still $800,000 sitting out there, including some specifically in the affordable housing designation right now. So CPC is bonding the $2 million, but using $1.3 million, but there's still funds notwithstanding these two projects that are before town meeting on November 13th that are just sitting there waiting for an application, waiting for the right moment. There are projects sort of hovering out there, as we know. We know we have existing old town hall that I think the board has been pretty clear about while we want to continue with repairs, we envision if One Pleasant Street goes through, we'll start turning our focus to a more serious review of how to repair, you know, that project. But we have to see if One Pleasant goes through first, so we have to consider that. And I think more important is that potentially to this group sitting here is that when we looked at CPC's future revenues, future anticipated revenues, we're looking at a substantial amount of money that CPC is taking in each year. And this was a part of the process that we used when we were looking really at the $2 million in bonding and how much that would cost year over year in terms of the bond payments and amortization schedule over a 10-year time period. And from that perspective, we were pretty conservative. And remind me if I'm wrong, but I think we were coming in around $800,000, but thought the number was closer to $1 million in CPC revenue year after year that would likely be coming into the committee. And Mr. Senior went through those numbers as well. So I, I do want to be clear that yes, this is a one-time project, that the town came to CPC and I think was, was, you know, happy to see that CPC made such a generous contribution, perhaps in recognition too, that we are asking our taxpayers for a lot in terms of many other potential tax increases that are out there. And this was the only project of the four tax increases that CPC money was eligible for at all. And so, you know, ironically... And so, you know, ironically, we're still trying to keep Cohasset affordable for people to live here, notwithstanding all the capital needs we have. So that was a, a factor in addition to the affordable housing as well. But I, I do want to make clear that going forward into the future, that there is still, you know, a relatively healthy sum of money. And we only tax up to one point five percent for CPC. There's many neighboring communities that go to three percent. If we find that the town is working together productively and has real opportunities, there's more opportunity for future CPC tax revenue beyond the projected future growth. So I don't know if that's any consolation, but that is how the math and the numbers work out. And like I said, Mr. Senior went through all of that with CPC at the time when we were looking at the numbers for bonding the recreation projects. Mr. Grady, I feel like I interrupted you.
No, no, I think you took the wind right out of my sails.
Sorry.
Any plans or renderings what the building's gonna look like with the offices downstairs? And who's gonna be where and entrances and? I'm just in the dark as to what this.
Right there.
We do have a floor plan of what the town offices will look like. Mr. Jefferson.
Just a couple of things, you know, thank you for your, your comments. We, I've done some research and just so you're aware, I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, what you will find is if you want to have the one twenty percent local preference or, or workforce housing is you're gonna have to, you know, so there's, I don't think there's an easy way around that if you're gonna go through this whole lottery thing. And just like there's kind of things for you guys to, you know, just to take into consideration as you're thinking about it. You'll probably then immediately have to write down the value of the building because of, you know, you're not gonna be able to sell those at market rate. So there will be some, you know, some, some costs, which is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jeffers.
Have to write down the value of the building.
Devalue it?
Devalue it because once it's need restricted, you know, now it, you're not gonna be able on need restricted. Now, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I, I could be wrong, but this is just based on what, what we're working there. There are nuances, right? There's workforce housing versus local preference. You know, if you want seniors to be able to live there, then you need local preference. I'm sure Marie can talk about the details of it and what you want to do, different pieces, or if you can combine that or, or, or not, but it's not exactly perfect. Also, talking to some other towns and looking at it, don't underestimate the effort that you are gonna have in town. You know, it's like, yes, great, you hire a property manager. I own property. I own two properties and I still have to spend a ton of time. Property managers can't make decisions. You know, you can say, all right, you can make a decision up to this amount, but they're gonna be coming back to you with stuff. You're gonna need to make policies, you know, about this. What if people start flying flags that we don't like or things like that? That's not gonna be the, the, the property manager doing it. They're gonna come to you to make those decisions. You're probably gonna need somebody in town halls, not gonna do a full-time job, but somebody who really understands managing property. And there's, there's lots of other towns that you can speak to that, that do this. Heard, you know, heard some stuff on other things about this being profitable. It's not gonna be profitable. Might be cash flow positive, but when you actually look at the numbers of depreciation and stuff like that, you're gonna probably not be profitable, especially if you're doing everything at eighty or a hundred and twenty percent. You might be cash flow positive, which is great, you know, because the taxpayers are basically, you know, paying, paying the mortgage. I think, you know, something to think about, like we're talking about where to use this other money. This is me, this is, I didn't talk to the Affordable Housing Trust or the Affordable Housing Committee on this. I put a hundred percent of that in reserve for at least the first several years. This is gonna be much more expensive than I think some people realize. As Marie was mentioning, you have to market these units for two months, then tell the person. So every time somebody leaves, you've got three months of, you know, not being, you know, you know, resident. So that's gonna be a much higher vacancy rate than you're probably planning. You're also gonna have to pay, you know, a month's rent to the, to, to placing agents. So right there, you're probably, every time you're turning one of these over, four months out of pocket if everything works correctly. Last thing on that, that I'll mention, you know, for, for you guys to think about is, you know, now I'm forgetting. Yeah, it basically is just gonna be a little bit more, you know, probably a little bit more expensive. So just in your planning, make sure that you, you have, you have the backup for them. The other things you mentioned, the CPA funds, you know, if you use the CPA funds, you can use it, but it's only for those affordable units, right? It's like it can't be for, for the broad. I think on a broader topic that we've been talking about, I think what you're hearing from us, we feel a little disrespectful. You know, and it's, and I, and we're all volunteers. You didn't mean to do that. I don't think, I don't think there's anybody going, oh, I, I woke up to say to make, you know, Rob feel bad. You know, I think we, we recognize we're all volunteers. We know how hard it is to get people to work on these committees. So I'll be honest, it hurts a little bit when you tell me, oh, the meeting was on the website. You knew I wasn't there, you knew I didn't come. We're all putting a ton of work and effort. And that's, I think that's all we're really asking for is, you know, if you're doing a major project on affordable housing, make sure we're there, you know, if this happens again. And I, I don't think it was malicious at all. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I think you messed up on, on.
No, but, but to your point, Rob, of course, we are gonna call you tomorrow and figure out what we're gonna volunteer you for. So, and you've done very good work and I understand that. And, and all of us have been on, on committees, so we understand that. So if some of you feel slighted, you, you certainly have our apology. We know how hard it is to keep track of that and we try to do that. As far as the economics, you know, there, a lot of the commercial underwriting criteria don't apply like depreciation. However, we will be putting money aside in reserves, which is very important. You put money aside from reserves, so when something breaks, the money is there, okay? We also, at this point, there's a very healthy, positive cash flow. And we've decided that cash flow will stay within the building. It will not, it will not be put out to other parts of the town. It doesn't go into the general fund. And then five years later, we may find that, but we're very, very much, you know, aware. We want this building to be self-sustaining. And it still remains through all of this, we have been able to solve the, uh, just the town hall issue. But also for those of you who've developed a lot of time and I've, I know how hard running our housing trust is. Very, very difficult. I've heard some of the stories and I understand it because I've had that experience. But we still are taking nine units that would have been market rate and converting them long-term. And we do have to figure out that what is the mechanism in which we assure that they remain affordable, big, big A, little A, and, and we're committed to doing that. On the other hand, it is important, as it was pointed out, that we make sure this is financially sustainable. So we're gonna have to figure out how it's going to do. But for all of you who've done all this work on there, trust me, we know how hard it is and your work is very much appreciated and your input will be appreciated. And again, apologies if we were not, weren't as attentive as we might otherwise have been. So, you know, we, we hope you'll, would some, accept that apology. But we want to move forward and we really need you to work with us and give us your input so we can move forward as a town on this.
Ms. Matheson.
Senior Matheson on the Affordable Housing Trust, just to your point, Mr. Green, I think everybody here relishes the opportunity to provide more affordable housing, both small A and big A, no, I think that is something we're all passionate about along with here. We're from these committees trying to figure out exactly how we address some of the tricky finances over time. And those are the questions that we're raising, I assure you are answered. You just mentioned you would stay within the building. Building's occupied by two different groups. There's the town employees and then there are the renters in the affordable units. How, for, do you provide how those monies are supported? What we're looking at is real, dirty sufficient funds to maintain the units, market the units, lotteries and so forth. How will you work, I mean, will some of those rental monies be going towards maintaining the town offices? That's some of the things we were unclear about.
Our projections so, show, because we don't have a mortgage, which is the major component of most real estate. We don't have a mortgage, although the town is paying for this at a tax rate. So we need to be careful stewards of that. The town's remains the landlord. And by the way, for property management, I've had some experience. You know, all the things like you've heard of Pine Street Inn, well, there's a whole bunch of nonprofit organizations that specialize in, in running affordable housing. They're very aware of these types of challenges and that's where they have the experience. And we will be reaching out to them because there is specific expertise.
I'm just asking how or do you segregate the funds that come in with your home to what can be set aside long-term just to keep the housing up to snuff? And how do you, and do you segregate that also keeping the town hall operations?
So there's a.
Are they pooled or are they separated?
There's a special state statute that allows the town to create a separate fund in order to take in the rent from that building and use it for the upkeep and maintenance of that building writ large. And so that could include the first floor as well. A part of the attraction of this is to do a, a general upkeep so we don't run into a similar issue of.
I can see there's.
Yeah. That, that said, we are looking at that statutory, and, and that is something that the town through the select board, the select board is the applicable body under this statute, it can do and expend money on for these repairs without town meeting votes, without needing that appropriation mechanism. That said, we, we are consulting with our lawyers about at the end of the year whether excess money goes into the general fund, which is not our intent. It's to keep a reserve there to do the ongoing maintenance and all the, you know, ongoing expenses of the building. And so we're looking into a revolving fund as well. Yes, Mr. Gummer?
Just a question on whoever has created the financial analysis for the units. Can I ask what, how much are you discounting the gross rents to accommodate for the associated expenses for working this?
I think I have that, let me see. I think this has been since updated, but we were, we were using a twelve percent management fee, which is pretty hefty. We were accounting for twenty percent expenses of rent, which again is pretty hefty, but we thought necessary. Five percent vacancy rate, which might need to be increased at this point. We added in a lottery and setup amount and we're still getting more precision on the insurance aspect as well. And then we're gonna have overall repairs, like for example, maintenance of elevators, et cetera, that we continue to look into with respect to the building, which we don't own yet, right? And so we're not in it, so.
Yeah, it's the analytics, which are critical. And the reason I'm asking is that I, I have no idea what you're, what you're thinking about for a reserve. I, I sit on my, my own county association trust. And I can tell you that if you're lucky and you're building, but if you're looking at anything less than three percent of rents as a reserve, then you're, you're well on the rest of it. You're gonna feel more better, very grateful with respect to property management. But let's just assume that it's half, no, not half, but say, say it's the higher number of which you recorded at eight percent. Within that, you, you also have vacancy and you've heard some of that. Eighty-five percent would be a dream. I think it's probably more likely that you run ninety percent occupancy on a ongoing basis. And that's not bad. I'm sorry, Steve, you say ninety? Nine zero. And I think that would be optimistic, but.
But ten percent.
Be optimistic about it. So that's ten percent, ten percent vacancy rate, there's your, there you come to discounting. And then you have the common area expense, whatever that might be now, insurance is one of them. I can tell you for an empty building, which is probably a little bit larger in size and older. There's a difference, right? But we're now looking at fifteen thousand dollars in, in insurance with a ten thousand dollar per occurrence deductible. Interestingly enough, that's fifty, five zero percent higher without a claim than it was just three years ago. Property insurance is going. Now, mind you, you've got Maya, maybe they step in. I don't know. But my point in all of this is that the devil is in the details. And ultimately, what you end up looking at is gross rents that have a, an impinging effect on their ability to actually support those units outright. And that's where I'm getting, that's just back of the.
So we were looking at, Steve, at an eighty percent AMI, I believe, were the numbers that you were using, Michelle, for the.
I was actually more aggressive in, in figuring in the gross rents and assuming that the actual average rent would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe I was using about twenty-seven hundred dollars based upon square footage, which you have available in the fourth quarter. And again, we don't have the specifics. My, the point is not to denigrate the project, but rather to have an understanding of it at a deep level so that it doesn't run into a bust.
So based on the numbers that we were looking at in the earlier draft, accounting for the increased vacancy rate as well as the insurance at the numbers you just quoted, we were looking at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surplus. Increasing, accounting for a ten percent vacancy rate, accounting for fifteen thousand in insurance, although that number will probably need to be higher. So that's around sort of the ballpark of the net after you account for all of those expenses. But again, that was at an eighty percent AMI, not at the higher AMIs that we could charge for because we are trying to be conservative and, but yeah, the numbers do continue to change as we try to drill down with more precision on the exact expenses as we go forward. And a part of it is making decisions too on what the AMI is, right? There's a big difference between eighty and one twenty. We're, we'll make more money if we go to one twenty, which will allow us more cushion if need be. But there's a policy component to that as, you know, we've heard from Donna about if we went up to one twenty as compared to eighty, right? And so we're navigating those, yes.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, what, what is the lineup of one bedroom and two bedrooms? I don't see unfinished space.
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, so the space is, is almost twenty. I believe the makeup would be six, two bedrooms and the second one would be minutes.
I would like some clarification on the big picture, please, because I know that you requested one point two million from CPC. But I've heard someone else refer to money from the Affordable Housing Trust, some kind of number from there. So has, has money been asked from the Affordable Housing Trust for this?
No.
So then I would like you, someone to give us a little explanation of how you justify the one point two million dollar number to what it is for affordable housing.
Sure, so, and Chris, I don't know if you want to jump in, but I'm happy to. On the one point three.
On the one point three.
Oh, you mean like the big picture or specific as to the market value? Oh, you mean like the big picture or specific as to the market value? So we're
How did you come up with that number?
The 1.3, yes. So that was market value as it related to the four deed restricted units. And so the entire, the entire property is 9.1 million dollars. And there's still some additional cost to actually getting in it if, assuming that the town meeting and the voters vote this through and we start to move in in March, there's some additional cost. And so that brings you up to 10 million.
So 1.3 included in the nine, I mean, in your thinking?
Yes. So what, what that, the 1, the 1.3 would be a reduction. It would be money that would go towards the purchase of the building that would otherwise be a tax increase for the Cohasset residents. And so whatever we don't get through CPC, people will just need to pay more taxes in if, because we don't have an alternate source of funding. And so if, for example, this project passes at town meeting in the, the first warrant article, and then the second warrant article, people don't want to do the CPC recommendation, then people will be paying a tax increase correlated to that $10 million that we need to get the property off the ground.
So the 1.3 million is a deposit against the 9.1, so you're going to find us less. So you're using CPC money as the deposit and finding us, is what you're saying?
Well, it's not really a deposit. We'd have to buy it all at once per the PNS. We don't have a deposit. It's just the, when, at the closing, you know, the source of funds would be CPC as compared to the money we'd have to pull in through a debt explosion.
What is 1.3 million over 30 years on the average home of $1 million? Is that another $15 a year?
25, I believe.
$15 a year?
I believe, I believe that's the
My point earlier, which I'd rather have that 1.3 million stay in CPC and I'll pay the extra $25 a year over 30 years. The amount of money that's in CPC is so valuable to those three buckets. More valuable than, you know, the extra $25 a year per person on taxes. If we're going to finance 9.1, then we're going to finance 10.
But I, I think, subject to check, we do have the opportunity to increase the tax levy that goes to CPC. So what you're proposing is additional funding for CPC.
Yep.
By all means, propose that. We're happy to discuss that and get some public input on it, if that's what you're proposing.
So we could move from one and a half to three.
Correct. Right. We can always go to town meeting and ask to increase the percentage of money from the tax bracket to go to CPC, right? But that's not what we're asking. We're satisfied that they might only go to CPC.
But it's the same thing, right?
We're, it's not the same thing. We're talking about the use of funds. We're talking about the use of funds. So in, in our view, we're using the CPC money as a down payment on a town hall building. We're not buying the units just, they're all looking for. That's our disagreement. We're just kind of confused on how you
And that may just be a fundamental disagreement about the 1.3 million for the purchase of the four affordable units with the additional benefits of not raising taxes as much as we would otherwise and gaining the nine lowercase a affordable units as part of the project and taking advantage of a town hall that costs less than 50% of what the previous proposal was. So from our perspective, there are multiple benefits to the project and there are multiple resources at work to make the acquisition. One of them is the funding from the CPC.
While leaving a reserve in CPC
Thank you.
Over $800,000.
We're all feeling like it took a while. CPC had funds for a long, long time before we finally got the trust set up. And having the money actually in the trust now means we can act on things. And there's much more bang for your buck for a million dollars to be as possible either go into the three buckets and with a chunk going into the trust straight in that's actually cash money versus this going to a project that we all know. It's, and I think it's an ingenious idea that it had in these solutions, but essentially we all know our taxes are going up to pay for this. So we have physical passions on. They collected and can be designated for other activities rather than getting absorbed in this giant project where we were going to get credit for affordable units anyway.
Well, I think that's a good point. Well, one of the things is we only credit for the affordable units, but there, but for the four units. We get for 13, but we wouldn't get
A, A, small A thing and that, you're right. It gives us more.
But the
The other thing is I just, this is kind of off topic. I would much rather see you spend money on the old town hall, which I know is another piece of conversation, but I'd be happy to see the CPC money that poor town hall has been running for renovation for so long and it's been saddled with the annex that everyone hates. Well, now it's just moving the units and it's to go away.
Well, that, that, one of the points that I wanted, and what you're talking about is when we look at overall obligations townwide. Just a little background. What we've tried to do in the long range planning, which just goes back about two and a half years, we realize that there's a lot of things like the paving roads and sidewalks. And so what we, when we put all of this together, we're trying to say, how do we fund the things that have been put off, not funded for a while? How do we fund them? And how do we make sure that we pull equally and fairly from all the various buckets? So CPC money is of course taxpayer money. It's put aside. So part of it is put aside for affordable. We thought to buy for four and then because, but we were getting 13 actual units that are occupied by people who are affordable. So we kind of like that. All right. And when, whenever we do trade offs, there's nothing perfect, but you know, tennis courts, all kinds of various things that we're trying to do. So we just try to balance them.
Mr. Gomer or Ms., then Ms. Hurd?
The larger project, so if you're, if this were successful, Town Hall moves to One Pleasant Street, which then leaves a very interesting, attractive land around the Common at 41 Hyland. Happens to 41 Hyland. Because the question really is financial. Take a $9 million, maybe $10 million property off the rent, off the tax rolls. And it would seem absolutely logical that the replacement there, right? We're asking people to pay more taxes for a 20, probably a 20-year period for Town Hall. And now we're a lot of land in a building that has been off of, off of tax. Absolutely logical to return it. Consideration given.
Well, I, I think that's part of a larger community conversation. Even looking out in the audience, I can see a variety of opinions on that in terms of, I understand why financially that might make sense, but I do think that if One Pleasant Street goes through, the board is really interested in feedback from the community in terms of the long-term vision for, I think there's a variety of all sorts of different opportunities that can happen and
I agree with you on that. There's a piece of land in there that would make a wonderful community housing development.
Although it may cost 25 million, just so you're aware.
It costs 25 million, but there are, there are developments who would quite care about do that so long as the local trust has funding to help sustain that.
So I think that would need to be part of a bigger conversation. At the end of the day, I'm, I just, I think so many people have so many different feelings about Old Town Hall. The one thing the board has committed to do though, is not to let the property just go into disrepair and run into the ground. You'll see when you get the warrant that we have put out of free cash $500,000 extra into the capital stabilization fund to continue making repairs to Old Town Hall as we continue this discussion. And again, that still needs to be appropriated ultimately at the annual town meeting, but we did flag in the description that it could go to Old Town Hall depending on all the varying capital needs. So we are anticipating needing to put some, you know, consistent money into the repairs to maintain it. And we do intend to use it as swing space because right now our police detectives are located at 135 King Street. And so when we start renovating that space, we'll have to move them somewhere. And so we're planning on moving them into the annex during that short time period. So we're sort of doing musical chairs a little bit as we try to figure out the longer term plan with Old Town Hall, which I know is not gratifying, but it's the reality of where we are.
Back to One Pleasant Street.
Yes.
Yes.
First of all, I like to say that I'm in trade status. I think I said that at the meeting. May not agree with some of the others here, but I think it's a great idea myself. However, that being said, the caveat that I have is the 1.3 million dollars whereby the four units, as earlier, are going to be provided, Affordable Housing with a capital A are provided no matter who owns the building. So the only way that I personally, speaking for myself, not for committing here or anybody else, can really be behind voting for the 1.3 million dollars that has already been requested from CPC is if there is something deeded and it's in writing and it's a done deal, so that in all fairness to town meeting member, people who go to vote that night, that it's a done deal and it has been deeded and those other nine units are deeded in perpetuity or whatever it is you determine it's going to be. Whatever it is, you work it out. You've got the next few weeks to do it. You owe it to the town meeting members to know what they're voting for and what they're getting for the 1.3 million dollars. And it's not fair if it's not done beforehand because if someone votes for that, you're a select board that supports this now. But if it's not done and it's in writing in perpetuity, there's no guarantee what a select board five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years later, besides they want to do with those units. So if you're voting for 1.3 million dollars, you take the CPC funds to go towards this project, you need to have it in writing that those additional nine units are deeded in perpetuity for whatever it is you determine, whether it's workforce, senior veteran, however you figure it out, it's, you know, up to no more than 120%, 110%, whatever figure you figure. Work it out. You've had since August or October or whatever it is. Do it and be able to present that to town meeting voters so that they understand what they're voting for.
So you're really saying you just want certainty that the whole building?
Yeah. For me, if I am going to vote in support of this and I've served for 15 years on CPC, I know with you, I care very much about Affordable Housing or I wouldn't be sitting here on the Affordable Housing
That's a
But I want to know what I'm getting
No, I like the way you go like that. You want certainty and I hear that.
All right, Mr. Rude?
A lot in the last couple of weeks. And not everybody in the CPC committee has been able to do that. And so we've scheduled a meeting for next Monday. And so if I want to meet here, Tracy?
If you have a carry, you might.
Yeah. And I'd like to invite everybody who feels that haven't been invited and didn't have a chance to talk to CPC to join us to talk about your perceptions on this, what you see as strengths and weaknesses and how you might make sure we have the best possible commitment to this. So that's a standing invitation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rude. Ms. Marr, mindful that you're on Zoom, is there anything you'd like to say or add in? Or if not, I also ask, is there anyone else that has any questions or comments? Okay, let me start with Ms. Marr first.
Thank you, Jean. It, it's been a little challenging. I can't see who's in the audience and not everyone is identifying themselves. So, so forgive me for that. I'd just like to say, you know, how, how we got to this point, we're, we're here today. It's October 24th. And I would welcome any opportunity to work with either the Affordable Housing Trust or Affordable Housing Steering Committee to nail down some of these questions and get some of the answers. I think, you know, I don't want to shock my colleagues, but I think, you know, we've been working hard on this. I think the hard work is really ahead of us. You know, once we get through town meeting and, and the special ballot election on how we're going to manage this. And I would welcome the opportunity to work with our colleagues in Affordable Housing to, to get all the details done.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there anyone online that has a question?
From Mike Dick. He asks, has any town entities surveyed the town's own workforce to determine if there's actual local workforce to manage for workforce housing? Will the town workforce employees be in position to actually leave the current situation and head up and move differently to One Pleasant Street?
No, no one has surveyed the local workforce and we, I don't think are inclined to do so because at this point, I was actually reading the DHCD guidelines and you have to be very careful about that for discrimination reasons. And so we fully intend to comply with the law as it relates to that. I understand the impulse that Mr. Dick has, but we need to be careful about how we approach this project. And we, we just need to make sure that we're on the up and up before we begin going down that road. Because we will step into a position as a landlord where we have to comply with all those laws that Ms. Leary just identified, including state and federal laws. And I see people in the audience nodding because they do have, it, it strikes me, experience in exactly what I'm referring and alluding to, Mr. Dick. So let the record reflect that people more experienced than me are nodding. Mr. Jeffers?
Yeah, one thing to add to that is I've been doing a little bit of research, you know, just so people are aware, you give local preference. If nobody local, you know, applies, like, so if you don't have enough, you know, people, that goes out to the, to the broader open, you know? So what tends to happen is in the beginning, the individual's absolutely right. Not everybody's ready to move at that moment in time. But it's, you know, the idea is that over time, people hear about it and potentially have more. But, you know, it's like on day one, it's not like, oh, great, yeah, I'm going to move. So it's just managing expectations. It's not going to be filled with workforce, you know, day one, several years before you get there.
And I believe Mr. Jeffers and Mr. Kierz and Mr. Gomer, you are on a call where we talked with a resident who happened to have a significant amount of experience in affordable housing on the private side. And we were talking about a development in Quincy. And I believe he said that that development, which I think has been pretty well established with 60% workforce housing, but it was of a much larger scale versus the 13 that we're looking at.
They remind these in one and two bedroom units. They're not like family units on three or four bedrooms. So you're not going to get
Yeah. Make a difference.
It won't be vacant, you know, you get a bit if you don't have work that you have. Somebody else, you're not.
Okay. Anyone else online other than Mr. Dick? Any other questions from the audience? Well, thank you. And apologies if anyone was offended or felt disrespected. That was not my intent and I probably speak for the rest of the fellow board members. We've been trying to do a lot very quickly, including work through these opportunities. So we really do appreciate your feedback and expertise and we'll continue to work with you. And we're taking notes of everything that you're putting down. And you should feel free to always reach out to us directly as well if you have additional questions or concerns. We have one scheduled meeting before town meeting. It's, I'll, I'll have to talk among, I guess, the board members about what we want to do for town meeting prep, but I think there are a few specific to-dos, including the specific deed restriction that the, the board has to make a decision on and decide how we want to proceed.
In perpetuity.
I have a question.
I need to get a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Oh, sorry. Yes, please.
But we want you to know you're all welcome to stay. It gets really exciting later on.
Thank you for listening.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
We're working on the execution. Thank you.
Just here, interviews, that's the main thing.
Okay, so let's refer the deed restriction issue to all of the committees. I'm just kidding. Well, everyone is gone now. Ms. Mar, there's no one in the audience. Everyone is excluded.
We ready to adjourn?
It looks like Mr. Mr. Oh, okay. Sorry, we're just looking at, okay. So my fellow select board members, are there any to do's that we immediately want to take away and get ready for the next meeting on? How about the deed restriction issue? What are we thinking there?
I like workforce. I think we're all on board with that. What we need to discuss further is if we also have senior preference in there or if we want to continue. Veterans.
Veterans.
And also in perpetuity.
I would be in favor of all three.
Okay, so Ellen, I just want to make sure Ellen can hear because I, so Chris just said that he would be in favor of workforce plus seniors and veterans.
Yeah, yeah, I think I, I don't know if we can wrap it up as local preference. And can local preference include workforce, veterans and seniors? And can that be deed restricted? I don't, I don't know.
I think workforce, from what I read, although Michelle and Maureen, please correct me if I'm wrong, by virtue of workforce, you're unlikely to get seniors because.
Right.
Right, they're not necessarily part of the workforce and.
So that that eliminates then a group that we heard tonight is looking for ways to downsize. So so what all encompassing.
But we could split, split some units, right?
Well, we don't have to say this is for this and this is for this. We could just say in perpetuity, it is restricted to blah, blah, blah.
The block of nine, and I'm modifying my.
Oh, I see what I.
The block of nine would be set aside for local across all. And then a combination of seniors, workforce and veterans, all of whom we would consider a preference group on equal footing for the nine units.
Not sure that's legal, but we can check.
Yeah.
Can we lock it down in perpetuity?
Yes.
And not trying to needle you, but why would it be potentially not the.
There's different requirements for workforce versus local preference.
Okay.
Local preference, you're potentially, you're opening it up to seniors, workforce, it's different. And that's what Maureen explained too, and that's what I've read as well. Local preference can include workforce, but workforce doesn't necessarily include seniors, right?
But if we make it all inclusive, we don't have to solve that right now. We just say of, it has to be in perpetuity, these bulk of categories.
But I think those are the groups who are trying to benefit. So let's throw it over the wall to the lawyers and see what they come back.
So Michelle, would you, would you mind saying, this is, the board is considering a deed restriction. We're focused on these three groups. We want to see how much flexibility we can get from our lawyers and ask the Affordable Housing Steering Committee if they have any specific suggestions on those points, as well as the Cohasset Housing Authority. I realize that's, you know, three groups to manage input from. But if if they have something specific that they think we should consider with our lawyers, then let's take their feedback and punt it all over to the lawyers and see what we come back with. I think what what Chris is trying to get at is a restriction that's, a restriction but still wide enough to give us flexibility.
Right, yeah.
Now, the other question is, there was some sentiment about why is CPC money used at all? And what do we want to deal with that or do we just want to say, hey, listen, that's town money and it's.
I'm extremely comfortable with the use of CPC funds for this project.
Okay, so that's a battle we think is, and CPC ones.
I feel that at least I individually have heard the pro and con arguments, and I continue to be very comfortable with this specific use of CPC funds.
So am I.
Yeah.
How do you feel, Jack?
I'm fine with that.
How about you, Ellen?
Fine. I mean, the voters are the ones who are going to decide.
Yeah.
Well, that's sort of, yeah. I think if, I think if we were to do any redirection on CPC money, that would need to be a vote on the floor of town meeting.
Yeah, amendment to the motion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
Do we need to clarify that with Mr. Reardon for the meeting that he has coming up near term?
We should.
That's, that's you, okay, Mr. Grady. So can, if you could connect with Mr. Senior to confirm in fact that if there's going to be any change in the recommendation, that will have to be a motion on the floor of town meeting and presumably explained as to why and what.
I can explain that at the meeting.
Okay, so the takeaway is the deed restriction, want to restrict it but still keep it flexible as we try to work through these iterations. But if you could copy those three chairs, just to make sure there's some feedback they want to provide, we're open to it. All right. It's 9:17.
Wrap it up.
Yeah, let me see, hold on. Police and fire satellite station, any update worth making at 9:17? Sorry.
Nope.
Not to do a leading question. Recreation projects, any update there from anyone?
No update.
Okay. Communications.
Do you want to hold that for Thursday?
Yeah, I think with communications and marking group prep for special town meeting, I would suggest we just table this to Thursday.
Same thing, it's just a bigger version. And I think you have, you sent this, you don't have this electronic allow, make sure you get a copy. This is a postcard draft, that's just a bigger version of what you have.
So Ellen, I know you can't see it, but I'm showing you what's a one pager that has bullet points on each of the projects and then the cost on the other side. And we have also behind us poster boards of this as well because the select board is heading out to, some of us are heading out to the trunk retreat and the town event on Friday and Sunday. One thing that's probably worth considering right now is we were talking about, when I say we, Chris, Mr. Senior and I were talking about trying to staff a table at the RTF and maybe another location to provide information to a critical mass of voters, maybe doing like a sign up list. We do have some other committees that have indicated that they might be interested as well in helping get the word out. So think about that. That's just a teaser for our Thursday discussion. But there we are. So next issue is the the budget message. Typically, we do a budget message in October to help provide Mr. Senior with guidance on the budget and planning for that process, which will begin in earnest in the beginning of next year, if not earlier. I would suggest in light of the late time, well, let me stop and say, one of the things that we've wrestled with is whether to hold the budget message until after town meeting, which is late, but a part of, the outcome of town meeting may inform how we approach the budget message and and more the actual planning, right, depending on what happens. I don't know if people have a strong feeling one way or another on this, including Ms. Mar, who hopefully helped draft the budget message.
We run the risk of people who are opposed for other reasons. And I saw some indication that there's some opposition for undisclosed reasons that would say, well, they don't even have a budget message. I'm just throwing that out there that we should be aware of.
Okay, well, we have a draft. It's just the whole, and it's in our packet, which is publicly available. I think the question is, given the very significant impacts of town meeting votes in either direction, what does the board think? And, you know, we can table this to next time. We're moving in into November, which again is a little bit late for a budget message, but.
I I I bring it up only for the purpose of saying we should be aware of that, that we might face that. And I have no thought about it.
Ellen, what do you think?
Jean, I I agree. I think we should table it because, you know, what happens is really important and we might be drafting a second budget, you know, a different budget message after town meeting. So I think it's, it's probably prudent to wait to see what the outcome is. Because 100% of this might not happen. And we also should wait for advisory to get the, I know they've been, they've had budget message on their agenda. And we should hear what they have to say as our, as our colleagues, you know, in terms of the budget message.
Yeah, typically we wait for advisory before we do our budget message, and I know they're feeling the same burn we are in terms of just a lot of work. But beyond the work, just whether it's the right time right now to do the budget message. And I think this conversation can help inform them too, so. Okay, my suggestion is why don't we hold unless someone has a strong objection to it? Okay, let's hold. Mr. Senior, and when I say hold, I mean, let's see the outcome of town meeting and then we'll immediately proceed to the budget message.
So November 20.
Yep.
Just three quick things. The next vaccine clinic will be here in this room on Saturday, November 4th, from 10 to noon. There are still spots if anyone still needs to get a flu shot. The clinic so far has been very successful. So you get Senior Goodwin and you get to talk and she'll give you a flu shot here all Saturday.
Is it just Cohasset residents?
No, it's geared to Cohasset residents, but if you have cousins in the neighborhood or friends or whatever, bring the whole family, just get a book in. It's all available online. The town has won another community compact grant for cybersecurity for $50,000. Very excited for the work that Ram and R and his team have done. And just a reminder, I know you mentioned this earlier, Jean, that the warrants will be hitting homes this weekend. It may look like a catalog. It's 84 pages. Most of that is zoning, so don't get overwhelmed by that. So it'll be in mailboxes this weekend. The info on the warrant itself is up on the town meeting page. The election materials will be coming up this, at the end of this week, all the materials on the special time election, including the deadlines for requesting absentee ballot. There'll be a video on all of that. So that'll, all the materials of the election will also be available by the end of this week. So lots of information out there as we begin the sprint to midweek.
Select Board comments. Would anyone like to make a comment? Let me.
Well, as a matter of.
Ms. Mar, would you like to make a comment? Okay, anyone else? Once, twice gone. Okay, approval of minutes. No, approval of minutes. Tracy, 9:19, 9:26. We're just going to proceed on those two, right? Because the other ones, you want to hold and wait for comments. Does anyone have any comments on 9:26 or 9:19? Nothing? Tracy, I just had one edit on page two for 9:19. The median home assessment is 1 million, not 1.1 million. And the maximum aggregate tax increase on the top of page three would be 1135 per month. I, I, after she explained that CPC funding, I think before that, we should add a sentence that she explained the debt roll off would reduce that amount in addition to CPC funding. So there's, there's two amounts that would reduce that, just for accuracy sake. Okay, those are my only edits. Subject to that, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 9:19 and 9:26?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mar, are you in?
Aye.
Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those present?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mar?
Ms. Mar, aye.
Thank you. Have a great vacation, Ms. Mar.